Dear Chairman, President, thank you for letting us gather here today, be with us as we provide and inform city business as you see fit, and be with us as we leave, and let us do everything in the ways that please you and shine your light to us in our actions in your name. Amen to this?
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the globe for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just.
All right, we call the meeting to order at five twenty-nine. Roll calling Perryman, Tiffany Nix, Nate Brewer.
Here.
Bar he is not with us tonight. Uh, Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President, good evening. This is a certificate of recognition. The City of Solocaga, Mayor of City Council, wish to recognize and congratulate Willis Davis, Will Davis Junior, for his tremendous angler achievements and sportsmanship resulting in the recent local win of Wim Watterberger based Bass Masters Elite at the Lake, uh, Lake, at Lake Lake Tournament. Will Davis Junior is a Solocaga native who has angling skill and career has risen him to national stage of the Bass Masters National. The City of Solocaga appreciates Mr. Davis's honorable reputation of his hometown while competing on the national stage. It is my honor to present this certificate of recognition on the twenty-second day of June twenty-twenty-three to Mr. Davis. He is not with us today, but the proclamation be for him to pick up. I've already both been requested to ask Laura from our Chamber of Commerce to come up and speak to us about what's coming up on the thirtieth of this month. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for allowing me to be here today. We're real excited. I'm gonna share these with each of you before I start. I should have handed up your order and apologize. Yes, next Friday, next Friday, we have a great community event planned. Lots of partners working together to make this event happen. July, June the thirtieth, beginning at four-thirty at Central Park across from Blue Bell. We will have children's activities, we will have food trucks, we have live music that will begin at six forty-five. But on our evening, we'll have games for the kids. We've got inflatable slides, we've got a fun frenzy, our mega sprinkler through the partnership with the Solocaga Fire Department. And then about eight-thirty, we'll have our fireworks presentation, which if you were there last year, it was a great evening. I hope that if you're in town or you can adapt your plans to make sure to join us. It's just gonna be a fun night. We have two live bands that'll be playing. Following the fireworks, the live music will continue probably till about nine-thirty or ten. So if your schedule's allowed, just come and bring your long chairs and your blankets and join as a community to celebrate. It's gonna be a great evening. And we appreciate our partners, specifically Coast of Pines Federal Credit Union for helping us make this event possible. And then our partnership with Solocaga Parks and Rec with the live music and with some of our other activities planned for that afternoon. So again, it's just all available to the community through these partnerships, and we're very appreciative of that. In your packet, I've also included a list of events through December. There's not a lack of things going on in the community as well as through the chamber, so I hope if your schedule's allowed that you'll join us for that as well. And then finally, in your packet, just a reminder of the things that the chamber works on and the accomplishments that we made in twenty-twenty-two and that we're continuing to do in twenty-three as well. We thank you for your support.
Thank you so much for heading us up and being just an amazing event for the community.
It is a great event, thank you.
All right, now we need to adopt the agenda. Can I have a motion to do so?
I'm making a motion, we adopt the agenda.
Nate Brewer, second. Lee Perryman, all in favor.
Yay.
All yeas approved. Need to approve the minutes of the Reguérnship Council meeting held June sixth, twenty-twenty-three. Can I have a motion? Tiffany Nix, second.
Second.
Nate Brewer, all in favor.
Yay.
All yeas approved. Need to approve minutes of the regular work session held June sixth, twenty-twenty-three. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Nate Brewer, second.
Second.
Tiffany Nix, all in favor.
Yay.
All yeas approved. We need to approve the minutes of the special call work session held June fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Nate Brewer, second. Perryman, all in favor.
Yay.
All yeas approved. No old business, new business. Reading into the minutes of Mayor's appointment of Tara Douglas to Solocaga Plan and Commission for the remainder of the vacated term to expire January twenty-twenty-four, no council action is necessary. And also reading into the minutes, the Mayor's appointment of Taylor Farr as the acting municipal judge effective June seventeen, twenty-twenty-three to July seventeen, twenty-twenty-three, or until appointment of presiding municipal judge. No council action is needed. Action is necessary to approve request from Human Resource Specialist Jamie E. for an extension to F M L A lead or street department employee R. Stacy Landry until October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Nate Brewer, second. Lee Perryman, all in favor.
Yay.
All yeas approved. Action that is necessary to make an appointment to the zoning board of adjustments and appeals for the remaining three years supernumerary term vacated by John Hall expiring January twenty-twenty-four. Texas Claire was the only applicant. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Nate Brewer, second.
Second.
Tiffany Nix, all in favor. All yeas approved. J O N for John Hall. Uh, we did have item number fourteen here, action that is necessary to approve change order number two for Solocaga drainage improvements along East Clay Street and South Church Avenue, South Norton Avenue and West Walnut Street and East First Street and Calveron Avenue. E E F N S project number twenty-three ninety-seven dash twenty-two, total number five hundred ninety-four thousand. Originally approved by Solocaga City Council with the resolution number fifteen dash twenty-twenty-three. Change order number two in the amount of twenty-one thousand, two hundred dollars is funded, funding supplied by American Rescue Funds. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Nate Brewer, second.
Second.
Lee Perryman, all in favor.
Yay.
All yeas approved. Action that is necessary to approve council payable in what should proceed today before June twenty-twenty-three in the amount of two hundred thirty-six thousand, one hundred seventy-five dollars and ninety-four cents. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Tiffany Nix, second.
Second.
Lee Perryman, all in favor.
Yay.
All yeas approved. Now it's time for anyone to address the City Council. No action will be taken at this meeting. Please come to the microphone podium, state your name, address, and for the record, prior to addressing the council. Uh, we do have, you do have a five-minute timeframe to speak, and I'll open the floor.
Thank you for this opportunity to be heard. Uh, my name is Earl Lewis, two nineteen, nine, twenty. I'm here representing a large number of people. Some of them haven't gotten here yet tonight. I hope they'll be coming, but we're not here to argue. We're here to try to correct some disinformation that's been given out over the years about the status of the swimming pool and to try to promote some common sense into the proceeding-making process. This whole controversy about the swimming pool started about four, almost five years ago now. And it started mainly off with misinformation. And since it's been proven not to be accurate information that was given out. Some of the things that have been talked about in the seashole under the swimming pool, dangers of the wall, great taping in, some other things of that nature. And there's no evidence anywhere. We've searched and searched and several people, searched any geological study that was done, that we were led to believe there had been one. Uh, we've never found any evidence of that, that it actually happened. I've got in my hands here a copy of the inspection that was done by the, uh, L D C F in, uh, I believe, uh, October of twenty-nineteen. There were ten items that they addressed during that survey. Four of them proved to be negative responses that they gave. Six of them proved to be positive responses. The four negative responses were, uh, well, one of those was a simple matter of some signs that was not displayed showing that the, uh, pool was accessible to handicapped people and so forth. Very minor, uh, negative layer. The others all revolved around poor maintenance of the swimming pool. Everything else that they cited, for example, a simple plate of some rotten wood, a light fixture that was missing, some things like that, that all shouldn't have been corrected long before by proper maintenance of the pool. Nowhere in this report does it suggest that the pool need to be closed. It didn't cite that there were some deficiencies that need to be corrected, that the pool was going to continue to operate. Most of them were pretty minor. Now, some, somewhere along the line after this document, after this inspection was made, the, uh, decision was made that the pool was not repairable, and that never was really documented. Had two different estimates to repair it. One for ninety-seven thousand dollars, and I thought Jim Armstrong orchestrated that one. Then another one that came about for a hundred and eighty-seven thousand to repair the pool. And they listed that, that cut in. I know nothing about the cutting. I'm just telling you what they said and what they offered to do. Uh, their, their improvements were things such as, uh, new guy on the interior of the pool, fixing or replacing the pumps, uh, new tile, new lane, uh, new lane ropes, new lane markers for the swim team, uh, some new tile in some areas. And at that point in time, which was in the spring of nineteen, I believe is correct, I may have that date wrong. They promised they could have it ready by the summer and have it operational for that particular summer. Again, at some point during this, uh, there was a, a statement made by somebody, and everybody wasn't notified about it, that the pool was not usable or repairable. And the mayor wound up signing off on a letter to A D E C and the L C W M, uh, getting his approval to it. But I think he would tell you right now, if he got the opportunity, he stated several times that he was given misinformation, or he never would sign, would have signed. He contacted A D E C himself, and the gentleman that he contacted told him that that declaration couldn't be proceeded and the pool couldn't be still repaired again. And that's, uh, where we stood at that point in time. The pool first closed on April the third, ninth, of twenty-eighteen, because of plumbing leak. On May the twentieth, thirteen, that plumbing leak was repaired. It's some extensive work done digging the deck up and repairing that leak. The pool was closed again in the spring of twenty-nineteen by Jim Armstrong with no, that was the point in time where there was no real reason given except that it, it couldn't be used anymore. There was never any documented reasons why that was true. Uh, that's when the mayor was told it couldn't be fixed and he signed that document. And the interim, as everybody here knows, all these different plans for the splash pad and locating the facility over on Main Avenue and so forth were discussed, breaks us up to the present time where we're talking about a thirty-five million dollar project that, uh, probably regardless of what anybody says, if anybody's really looking at this realistically, we're talking about at least three years, not two, to, uh, engineer finishing projects like that, probably more than three years. So we're talking about going into seven, eight, or nine years about swimming pool in Solocaga out there. That's not good. In August of twenty-two, backing up again, the pool pumps were cranked up by a local city employee who y'all all know who I'm talking about. They ran them for a little overweight, twelve hours a day, no loss of water during that whole time. Ran some chlorine through it and started the water to clear up a little, but then stopped. It took them four days to get the pumps ready to operate, but they did get them operational. And they believed that they'd been sabotaged because there was damage done to them that was not normal.
Well, Mrs. Lewis, let me stop you there. We're not going, you know, you got, I'm giving you a lot more than the five minutes, but I appreciate you doing that. Yes, sir. And, but I'm, we're not going, you can't listen to the accusatory statements and stuff like that. We're not gonna listen to that, but, you know, we do appreciate and know the trouble.
That's what I was up here for, to be listened to. I threw anyway, except for two things.
Okay.
I'll sit down. Uh, two things, uh, question marks I have about the whole thing. One is not including me, I'm one of them, but not including me, there are ten or twelve other people in this city who've got a lot of experience background in swimming pool. Everything from maintenance to operating them to lifeguarding the swim. Not one of them has been consulted by anybody. None of them have ever been asked a question, what they would recommend, or what they would suggest about a new pool or old pool or whatever kind of pool. None of us has been contacted. And I've spoken about, as you know, some other towns, but nobody's been asked a question. Looks to me like that would be one place you'd wanna go. Uh, I do want to reemphasize, at one point, the bids that came in were nowhere near ninety dollars. And there are some viable alternatives to solve this problem. If I'm out of time, I'll yield somebody else.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Leifum Hudson, called H P Lifeguard at Lake Louise. And I want to yield back my time to Earl Lewis, please.
Now, we can't, we can't absolutely, we're all in.
We're all in.
When do I have to yield to the justice officer? All right, that's, you know.
Hi, my name's Dan Whitehouse. I live at ninety-one Longview. I appreciate the comments that Mr. Lewis has made and all the details back behind it, but the simple fact of the matter is this. The center of any community are the families in that community and the children in that community. I'd like to know and understand despite tax increases, despite efforts, we may have individual events that occur. What's being done day in, day out to support and provide facilities for the children and the young people within Solocaga that these families will stay here in this community, they will be here, and not only, they will come back to this community. We do not want to see Solocaga become a Harpersville. And it takes some action and investment in the people and the families in this community to make that happen. I don't care about the history of what's happened before, or what's been done or not's been done. All I know is what our children don't have, which is the pool. Solocaga for families, y'all be seeing that in the paper a whole lot this summer. Thank you.
I'm Dan Perkins. I live in left fifteen Lake Drive, Solocaga. I'm a Solocaga boy. I was raised here. When I graduated from college, I came to Solocaga. It's right here. I, like Earl Lewis, have poured my life into this town. You guys up there, you're some of my kids. You know how I worked my butt off to give y'all a good P program?
Yes, sir.
In the project.
Yes, sir.
My first job, I was nineteen, teaching swimming lessons in Lifeguard. And I would come home from college in the summers and work at a little pool at a summer camp where my mother cooked. And I taught swimming lessons at that camp in Lifeguard. When I came to Solocaga to teach school, Earl Lewis and Sue Cochran finagled me into teaching swimming lessons and coaching the swim team at Solocaga. For several years, Kitty and I, and if you don't know, Kitty had gymnastics at the Solocaga Park and Recreation for thirty years, and now she's turned it over to Tommy. Look, folks, if we don't have a pool, where are we gonna tell our kids to swim? We're gonna tell them to go to the river, cut it for bed. They can't, they don't know how, they haven't had swimming lessons, they don't know how to swim. Just out of curiosity, while ago, now Kitty and I go to a daycare down in, you know, we do the tumble bus thing here. Hey, I'm seventy-four and I'm still serving the kids in Solocaga. That's it, that's me. My grandmother told me, she said, when you figure out why God put you here, you'll get up in the morning, you'll stick your toothbrush in your mouth, and you won't ever say, oh crap, I gotta go to work. Miss Kitty and I today spent time with children. That's our soul. But out of curiosity, Kitty and I go to a daycare down in Ellicity. Ellicity has a swimming pool. And guess what? Wednesday morning, they were teaching swimming lessons at that swimming pool. So I get on the phone this afternoon, I call Talladega, and I say, hey, do you have an aquatics program? Now, what are we gonna do? We're gonna tell our, our community that they've got to go to Talladega or Ellicity, or they've got to go over to Shelby County, to Hawaii, and take swimming lessons and, and swim team? Hey, look, at one time, Solocaga had one of the most recognized park and recreation, um, programs in the state of Alabama. And did you know at that time who was the athletic director? That man right there. He busted his fanny doing track and swimming and coaching and swimming lessons. When I was a little kid, my mom and dad either took me to one or two pools in Solocaga, Lake Louise or the Municipal Pool. And there was this mean old lifeguard over there, and he wouldn't let me run. He made me come over and sit down by his lifeguard stand. Then he would look at me, and he would say, now, can you remember not to run? Okay, I'm just saying, folks, look, a pool is like what you said. It's an important part. It's an important part. And Dan, if you build one, I'll think about coming in teaching swimming lessons at it. That's how much I love this place. And the only reason I'm not teaching at school now is I decided, hey, I need to let somebody else have a turn. Okay? And that's why I didn't teach swimming lessons anymore. It was time to let some other kids have a turn. And think about all the times that people like Chuck Baker and so on would do kayaking classes at the pool. Now, hey, if I've gone over, I'm sorry. But look, I love this place. And every kid that I talk and every kid that I've come in contact with, I love them. And Kitty doesn't have to pay me a penny. When little kids come up to me and they hug me and say, Mr. Dan, I love you. Pet check. When Nick comes over and he hugs me, pet check. Solocaga owes me nothing. I owe Solocaga. And we owe the children in this town. Because your kids took gymnastics or swam with me and Kitty, didn't they?
They did.
Yeah. Yeah. And we owe it our, our, our children. And if you love them, do something for them. Thank you.
Hey, Ginger. Hey. Hi, I'm Ginger Clifton. I live at ninety-two Dogwood Road. And I like Mr. Perkins and Tom. Spent my whole life here, took swimming lessons at Municipal Pool from Miss Betty Kerr, who never got in the water. Stood right on the bank with that hair perfectly beautiful the whole time, and somehow I learned to swim. But that's not what I'm here to talk to you about. Uh, today in our country, most of us older people are rather concerned because the government continues to spend huge amounts of money on projects over which people have no control, which we will need to, which will need to be paid for by our children and our grandchildren. These same frustrations are here in our little town right now. And that's why I want to come to you and appeal to you about some common sense. We, the people, used to stand for all of us, and now we, the people, seems to be, you guys. And all of you are, are, I consider friends. I remember Mr. Woody Knight was my friend, your dad was my friend, your mom was my friend. I don't know your folks, Tiffany, but just about everybody, I'm even related to, through my husband. So I'm not here to fuss either, but I'm here asking you to listen to the people that, who elected you. Listen to the people. Have specific figures on paper and pass them out. They're our business. We're paying for stuff that you all vote to do. So have specific figures on paper, back up what you say with facts. Present the documentation that you say you have from A D E C and for them, and from what you call, I believe, the pool people, Ashton. Get those papers out, have them in your hand. Don't say, I don't remember, or I don't know exactly, but have papers that can be put in the papers so that people will know. Get estimates from at least two independent pool companies. You, you don't get to pick one, and we don't get to pick one. We need somebody who is entirely impartial in this, to get two independent pool companies and make estimates on what it would cost to replace this pool or to build another one in the same spot. Consider the cost and consider what you have already spent on consultations and, and, and your plans for the splash pad, which is now thrown by the wayside. And we're not going to put a splash pad there, we may put a skate park or a basketball court. We, the people, do not need you to, um, be tough or brave enough to take the criticism that's coming from us, because it's not meant to be criticism. I love this town too. I've grown up here, I taught school here thirty-eight years. I want what's best for children. I don't even have a child anymore or a grandchild that lives here in Solocaga. But I want what's best for children, and they need a pool. We are not the enemy. We're not the enemy. We, uh, we don't, just because we see things differently from you does not make us uninformed or ignorant or unable to understand what is best. Let's all think about this stuff together. Let's think about it together. Let's see all the facts presented and see how much money can be spent. How much money can we actually spend in this city without people voting on it? How much? How much money can we actually spend in this city without people voting on it? How much? Apparently, we can spend thirty-seven million dollars. How much can we spend without people voting on it? Let's get all the facts, present them to the people, and if necessary, have a vote and see what people think. And last, it pains me to say this, but drive downtown and look at those empty store buildings. I respectfully ask you, do we really need to focus on the first phase of a rec- of a recreation complex? The first phase is going to cost thirty-five million dollars with the hope that in maybe three or four years, we will have a pool? I don't think so. Let's pause and at least look at our options. Solocaga is better than this, this one side and one side. We should be together and consider what is best for our community. And I thank you for your time and I pray and hope that you will consider this and know that our hearts are in the right ones.
Thank you, Ms. Ginger. And to your point, Ms. Ginger, to your point, Ms. Ginger, uh, with that master plan that Chambers and King came up with, we started it and built it around the entire community's input with the surveys on paper electronically, QR codes posted on the businesses and things like that. So, that idea and that picture came from the statistics and analytics based off of what you guys, the community, put on paper. So, we did do that. That's the first stop in any master plan. So, we, we took the community in mind first.
Who participated in that, I hear?
In the survey? I mean, I don't know who, but there was thousands.
They did. They even went out with the power bill.
Went out with the, you took the bill in your mail. It was on paper, QR. We've advertised, um, on the public meetings that they had. You had to have procedurally, Chambers and King did. We had public meetings to add that to.
I went to the red building to get that code, Q R I code to work, to work, and nobody's down there, um, that could tell me anything about it. And they said they would get, um, what's his name that's got a red building, said to comment, to email me that, and I got it in my email. Never heard of her.
Okay.
He never got that message, ma'am. I'm right here.
Well, that's, that's on.
Did you go after hours?
Man, how was I going to get in there after hours?
I mean, like, after four-thirty, five o'clock.
Uh, it was on a Saturday and there was nothing going on except a funeral.
Right. Yeah. I apologize. They never relayed that message to us, but, yes.
Ms. Randy.
Uh, Brandi Clark, two oh five Dell Street. Uh, a little over two years ago, I came before this council and I asked, do we have a date on a swimming pool? Everyone of you laughed at me. You thought that was funny. Remember? Yeah, y'all thought that was funny. But, look, we're, we're, all the lifeguards in here, people swimming in this pool, we're not against the future. We want the future. We want the future for our grandkids, kids, our friends' kids, the grandkids. But we're talking about four or five years down the road, what we're talking about the future. What we're talking about right now is a place to swim, right now. It's already been, like I said, over two years ago, I asked this council, do we have a date for our swimming pool? And, uh, I got lied to. Been lied to ever since. That don't bother me. We need a swimming pool now. We're going on, like I said, almost five years without a pool. Uh, our kids are going to Talladega, they're going to Palceda, they're going everywhere else to swim. It's not like us to not have a swimming pool. Let's get our heads together and see if we can't figure out a way to fix this pool. I know you done said a hundred percent, we're not going to fix this pool. Well, uh, not so far. I wouldn't, uh, I, I, I don't think you should have said that because, uh... And, uh, also, I'll tell you something else you said. The first phase of this project was going to be thirty-three million dollars, according to Chambers and King. He said, but we're going to borrow in thirty-five. Well, let me ask you a question. If you build a million-dollar house, you go borrow three million? That's our money. I'm like all these other folks. I've been paying taxes in this town for sixty years. But we need a swimming pool right now. That's all I got to say.
How's this formulated? I mean, we should.
You come up and.
Say the, you know, how, how would y'all formulate that? I mean, who, who.
It is come from.
That would bore him. I just want to ask a question.
Ask me. Just so we can hear you up here.
I don't think it might work because I can't hear anything on the mic. Yeah, okay. Who formulates this? I mean, we said what we said, but how, how do you go about doing it? I mean, do you put your head with Lee and, uh, from Mr. Perryman and, um, the mayor here, my golf buddy? But do you, y'all, uh, how, how's it go, how's it work? I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not wise on, uh...
Well, right now, you're talking about continuing the rest of the process with pool, recreation facility, all that? Is that what you're talking about?
Say that again, please.
Like continuing with the recreational process and building and stuff like that?
Yeah, you know, we said what we said. It's, it's in your hands now, so it speaks, so...
No.
You know, you put it in the pile and then you start.
Well, I'll tell you the position we're in right now, uh, to, if this helps. Chambers and King gave us the last of what they were hired to do, uh, including economic studies and such, the pricing and all, which with construction materials and lead times, it can be a shot. So, that's why I said thirty-five million because you never know, once you order the stuff, what it's going to be. So, we have a chance now. We have to finalize the site. The planning commission, we have to work with the planning commission to make sure that site's zoned right and all that, which it is. We just have to work with our comprehensive plan to make sure that's zoned right and go forward with going to the bond market to get the money secured and to then build.
Okay, can we, uh, can we agree that you've got a date? It's in the back of your head that we're going to start this thing?
I could, we don't.
And we're, we're, you know.
I just, go ahead.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just.
Yeah, we got to hire an architect to draw the plans up would be our next step.
And that's, it takes nine months, it will take nine months or more to draw those plans. Just throwing that out there.
At one time earlier, we were discussing, uh, that pool could be fixed and, and by July, early July, people could be swimming, you know? And that, that was, might have been pipe rings, but it sounded good, Lee.
Yes, sir.
That's all.
All right, thank, thank you. Anyone else for me?
Me. I'm Beth Morrison through fifteen West Clay. Time lost can never be found. And we've lost four years going on by. I moved back to Solocaga a year and a half ago and I cannot believe that this is happening. It breaks my heart. And it'll be four more years if we can get the bond. Consider the loss to the children. And I know Ginger went into that and I'm not going to repeat all that, but we can't put a cost on the loss of these children and their parents. It's bad. It's bad.
All right, going further, we're gonna have a motion to adjourn. Motion?
Motion.
Lee Perryman, second.
Betcha.
Tiffany Nix, all in favor.
Yeah.
Organization approved. Time of adjournment is six oh seven. Everybody have a second nine? Thank you, come on.